Yes, ma'am.
Rick, you ready? Okay, great.
I'm not participating.
All right. I call the regular meeting of the Milliken Board of Trustees for December 23rd, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we lost this one.
Thank you. He'll come back. He's smart.
Will the town clerk please call for a vote?
Trustee Beckman?
Here.
Trustee Lane?
Here.
Trustee Nick?
Here.
Trustee Orca? How did we lose? Trustee Wakeman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? I'll take a motion.
I need everybody to join the meeting.
I'm trying.
Okay. Brian's. Is Julie or Alexa?
Am I in?
I have Elizabeth Dan and Mindy.
Hi, child.
Can I do it on my cue?
Here, eat it.
Yeah, you can. Can we just go on and not worry about this?
I'll have to, I'll figure it out. All right, now you're connected.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Town clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca is... Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? There are none, we'll skip over that. Next item is the acknowledgement of paid bills. Does anybody have any questions for our finance director? No question? Okay. Does anybody have any comments or corrections for the meeting minutes of December 11th, 2024? There are none, I'll take a motion. I'll send to approve the minutes from December 11th, 2024.
My second.
Man, this is rough weather.
Town clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
And Michael was...
Thank you. Next up is the Town Administrator's Report. Administrator Powell.
As thank you, mayor and trustees, I don't really have a lot to report on since it's not been so long since our last meeting and meetings have kind of wound down for the year. But what I would like to do is, as this year draws to a close, I would like to reflect on town staff and how much they've accomplished, the difficulties they have persevered. Our police department experienced situations that aren't typical in our small town, but they did so with professionalism, with compassion, and knowing their work family was behind them. Also, after many months of work by Chief Garcia, we are now an accredited police department. Accreditation is a self-initiated process of adopting and maintaining standardized policies and procedures. And we'll hear more about it in, probably within the next month, I would believe. Kathy Kin's father, who runs our senior program and human resources, so Kathy took the initiative in an effort to enhance the human resources department. She has received her APHR certification in human resources to best serve our employees. She's managed to update our employee handbook, which was quite outdated, and along with updated employee value written forms. Our finance department is always busy. Wade and Courtney had another successful audit this year and worked hard to bring us a balanced budget for 2025. These processes go on all during the year. And, you know, you see the list of bills, you see, all these things compile into our audit. So they're very meticulous in how they do this. A lot of these items take a lot of attention to detail. Lots of conversations go on through the year with staff regarding capital projects and the type of equipment staff needs to reform their jobs. So, you know, you see us every couple of weeks, but every day, everybody's super busy and working together in order to get these things accomplished. Pepper's Department is another one. I don't think people realize how many building permits people come in and get, whether it's a homeowner or contractor, you know? Plus, people come in to talk about, you know, perhaps opening a business or annexing into town. And so it's a busy department and it's been great having Jordan here, you know, added to our staff because of just the amount of calls and emails and personal people that come in every day. Our Parks and Public Works Department, which is run by Pete Stags and John Rabus, are the most noticed of our staff as residency improvements they make throughout the year. They strive to make our town beautiful by taking great care of our parks and open spaces, decorating our streets with the holiday lights and displays. Our Streets Department has sought out grant funding to make much-needed improvements to keep our residents and business owners safe by traveling down well-maintained roads. Our Water and Wastewater Department has seen the end of our RO plant due to being financially not feasible to continue treating this water. But through this, they have also went out and applied for a grant in which they received in order to blend this water with water in our storage tank to keep this asset alive in our community, which is about 100 acre feet or more of water per year. This project should be completed in 2025. A group effort between Parks, Waste Water, Wastewater, and Public Works is the Ehrlich Lake Pump House. This system will add capacity to our non-potable water throughout the parks and open spaces and will hopefully be online in the spring of 2025. Rick Monday, our IT specialist, didn't know what he was getting into when he joined the Town of Milliken family, but he has done a wonderful job getting up to speed in all things Milliken and some of the nuances that comes with his job. Rick, not only does IT support, but phone support, cellphone support, security support with our automated door lock system, and camera support with our various cameras located throughout the town. With the addition of our support services through Connecting Point, which we're very pleased to have, our protection of any cyber breach has been greatly enhanced. Our Clerk's Office, you know, though Carrie never has enough to do, she took on the task of updating the town's website, agenda system, and the ADA compliance for our documents. This has been a long, stressful, and very difficult project. She has done a remarkable job and has maintained an excellent attitude through it all. I've only touched on a few items in each department, but I am greatly honored to work with such a talented and dedicated staff. Lastly, I would like to thank the mayor and trustees for your support with staff and the many facets of our jobs. Without your support, it would be difficult to accomplish the things we do. So it's been a great year, a lot of great projects, a lot of great people that have, as I said, dedicated themselves to the town and have done remarkable jobs. So they're who I thank.
Good job. Any questions or comments for the board?
I appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you to everybody.
You and all.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. But, you know, they're not, I don't speak of them enough, and I think they all each realize how important they are to me, but I wanted to make it publicly known, for everybody to know just how important their jobs are and what they do make my job easier.
A big thank you for a great 2024 to Town Administrator and staff.
And I'm gonna say we wouldn't be who we are without a great leader like that woman right there. She deserves a lot of kudos.
Thank you, buddies.
Thank you. Okay, so we do not have anything on the consent agenda. The first item is a public hearing for consideration and adoption of Resolution 2024-28, a resolution updating fees on the town fee schedule. Presenting is Wade Nickerson, Finance Director. Since this is a public hearing, the time is 6:42, and I'm opening the public.
Good evening, mayor, trustees. This resolution is to update the fee schedule. We do this periodically, staff reviews the fees that are on this schedule to make sure that we're recovering costs as well as maintaining what we need to keep our funds running for the future. This involves, this fee schedule involves changes to Chapter 6, which is the business licenses and regulations. It includes some updates to municipal utility fees and also some building regulation fees. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Trustee Orca?
No questions, thank you.
Trustee Beckman? I don't have any questions. Trustee Nick?
With the new yearly dump fee for dump day, $10 per load, is that going to be enough to cover what we pay waste connections to do that cleanup day?
No, it is not. What, actually, I did a little math on that, and so for cleanup day, it costs us about $48.29 per load, and so we're gonna recover about $20 on that. Right, right now, we were trying to use some of the extra money in the trash fund, so we'll be able to continue at a lower rate for the next couple of years before we have to adjust it again, would be my hope, yeah.
Trustee Lane?
I have no questions.
Trustee Wakeman?
I'm just a little, I'm a little curious, mostly when I looked through it, it looked like some fees raised, it wasn't necessarily according to percentage, would that be correct? That like some fees, you know, maybe a $900 fee raised $100, whereas something that was a $400 fee also raised $100, and so...
Yeah.
Just wondering what the, what the kind of thought process was.
The mentality of, yeah. So a lot of these, a lot of the fees are, all of these fees are cost recovery fees. So, and the one that comes to mind is the cost of the water meters. So we have updated those costs based on what the meters actually cost us. That's why, you know, a small, the smaller meter really only went up like $100, but the large meter went up like $1,400. Those are, those are cost recovery fees where we have to, we have to make that money back to cover the cost that we're charged. And so that's why you'll see, you know, room rentals, that type of stuff. Some of those room rentals, we weren't covering the cost of the staff monitoring that building. So we have to, we had to get some of those updated to recover the costs of those services that we're providing.
Great, great information. Also then, just, just kind of for review, like the increase in, in the fees for water usage and things like that, that's again recovery fee, right? And is that the minimum that, that we have set to increase, or was it, did you need to increase those more?
So the last, the last two years, 2023 and 2024 going forward, our water, we've gotten water increases of 20% each year from one of our providers, and we got six and a half, 6.75% increase, and then a seven and a quarter percent increase from the other provider. So those water rates are set to try and recover those costs. Previous year, we saw the increases and felt that we were able to, to not increase the rates as much as we need to. Last year, we only increased the water rate, the water rates 4%, even though we got the much higher rates from our providers. And so now, we can't continuously do that. So we have to, we have to pass some of those fees on to keep the water fund stable.
Sure. So still trying to incrementally increase this year to account for last year's without hitting the residents?
Yeah, yeah.
All at once.
And, and part of it is, part of it is just a balancing act where, okay, we can use a little fund balance, okay, we know we have this project coming, so we, we can't wait to increase. And, and so it's not always an exact one-for-one increase, but we, we have to look at the bottom line, especially on the water fund, the enterprise funds, to make sure that, that they're gonna be financially stable going forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And one added thing that I apologize that I didn't tell you earlier, so one, one thing I generally do when I, when we, when I increase these, present these for increase is I calculate what an average utility bill is gonna go up. So the average utility bill right now is about $111 a month, okay? That's water, sewer, trash, storm drainage, okay? That's gonna go up about 13%, okay? Water's going up a little bit more, but that's not the whole bill, so that's why it's, it's not actually going up the whole 20% that, that I keep pointing to. Yeah, so you're gonna see, most people are gonna see about a $12 to $15 increase per month in their water bill, in their utility bill. And that includes small increases to sewer and storm drainage per our code, as well as the increases to the water fund.
We don't really have any publics, but any public comment? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Mayor Protem Dean?
That's all right. Just curious about what a shadow billing fee is?
So the shadow billing fee is if, when we have a renter in a home, we, we send the bill to the owner and a bill to the renter both, and at this point in time, that's $2, and that doesn't cover the cost of the envelope, the stamp, and the paper printed on, so we need to increase that.
Just wasn't familiar with the term. Now I understand completely.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. The time is 6:50, and I'm closing the public hearing. I'll take a motion on the matter.
I, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-28. I'm adopting the fee schedule effective January 1st, 2025.
My second. Town clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca? Trustee Orca, would you like to vote on this matter?
He's muted.
We'll go back. Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Trustee Orca? Thumbs up.
Okay.
Do we get the voting thing on our pad?
I wasn't sure if everybody got in. So I'll do it for the next one.
I hope everyone did.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance number 819 for natural medicine businesses. Presenting is Carrie Reimberger, Town Clerk. The time is 6:51, and I'm opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, trustees. Tonight is a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance 819, an ordinance adding Section 16245, Licensed Natural Medicine Businesses, and amending Section 16200B to Medium Industrial District, and 168200, Definitions of the Milliken Municipal Code, to regulate the time, place, and manner of natural medicine business. In 2022, a ballot initiative called Proposition 122 was proposed to amend the Colorado statute to criminalize the personal possession, growing, sharing, and use, but not the sale of, by natural psychedelic substances by individuals age 21 and over. Includes substances found in psychedelic mushrooms and three plant-based psychedelic substances. I apologize, I'm not gonna read them all, I will butcher them. The proposition also proposed that by late 2024, to allow the supervised use of psychedelic mushrooms by individuals age 21 and over at licensed facilities, and require the state to create a regulatory structure for the operation of these licensed facilities, to allow the state to expand the type of substances that may be used in licensed facilities, and to include the use of additional plant-based psychedelic substances starting in 2026. It also proposed to prohibit local governments from banning these types of licensed facilities, services, and use of natural psychedelic substances as permitted by the measures while allowing local governments to only regulate time, place, and manner of the operation of these facilities, and to establish penalties for individuals under the age of 21 for possessing, using, or transporting natural psychedelic substances, and for individuals 21 and over who allow underage access to substances. The voters of Colorado approved the initiative, and Governor Bolas signed Senate Bill 23290 into law in May of 2023. And the legislation was incorporated into the Colorado Revised Statute, Article 50 of Title 44. The licensing and regulation of natural medicine in Colorado falls under two state agencies, the Department of Regulatory Agencies, also known as DORA, and the Department of Revenue, also known as DOR. DORA will regulate and license facilitators of natural medicine service, and DOR will license and regulate natural medicine businesses, healing centers, cultivation centers, manufacturers, and testing facilities, and their owners and employees. DORA and DOR have been working since this time to make rules on the legislation, and they were adopted in October. DOR will begin accepting applications on December 31st, 2025. Ordinance 819 will add criteria to the Milliken Municipal Code to regulate the time, place, and manner of natural medicine businesses, add the use of a conditional use to I2 medium industrial, and add definitions to the definition section of the municipal code that mirror the definitions of the Colorado Revised Statute. Staff recommends that the Board of Trustees adopt Resolution 819, and the Planning Commission conducted a hearing on December 18th, 2024, and also recommended adoption of ordinance 819. The big changes that we are allowed to make going to time, place, and manner was place, we mimic the state's distancing for setback, so 1,000 feet from childcare centers, preschools, elementaries, middle, junior, and high schools, as well as residential childcare facilities, and 1,000 feet from a property used for single-family dwelling, duplexes, or multifamily dwelling. The hours of operation we proposed in the ordinance was from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The basis on that decision was that from all the classes we attended that generally the withdrawal period after your dose is two hours, which means customers would still remain at the business until 5:00 PM or later because they can't leave the facility until they drop. So we thought that 3:00 PM would be the latest we would want to allow them to, in order to give a dose. In the manner of operation, we mimicked the Colorado statute as far as lighting. And I am available for questions, and I will do my best.
Okay. Questions from the board? Trustee Wakeman?
No questions.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Nick?
No questions.
Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Trustee Beckman?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Dean?
No questions.
Any questions from the public? All right. The time is 6:57. I'm closing the public hearing, and I will take a motion on the matter.
I move to adopt ordinance 819 to regulate the time, place, and manner of natural medicine business.
My second.
Town clerk, please call for a vote.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Our third public hearing is to adopt an ordinance of the Town of Milliken, Colorado, enacting a new article in Chapter 11 of the Milliken Municipal Code regarding special event permitting. Presenting is Matthew Gold, Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Austin.
Not quite done yet?
Sorry.
The time is 6:58, and I'm opening the public hearing. Please present.
Thank you, Mayor Austin. The ordinance that you have before you is something that we came and discussed in a work session a number of weeks ago. I guess worthy of particular note is the fact that currently the town only has one section of its code that's dedicated to special events, and what this does is it forces the town clerk who administers that section to make a lot of decisions, often on short notice. So the, the town clerk worked pretty hard to come up with this code, and our office helped her in kind of formatting it, finalizing it, putting in some terms that we thought were important. And the resulting body of regulations should make it very easy for the town clerk to administer the special events process. Just a few things that, that have been added, some of the features that are present. There's a definition section, hopefully to give some clarity to the whole body of code. There's a specific carve-out for certain types of events that are exempt. There is an application filing deadline of 45 days, but an allowance for the town clerk to accept later applications in, in her discretion, where the idea is that if there are simple events, those can still be processed within a shorter time period. There's provision for monetary security for cleanup, and there's also provision for appeal of denial of an application, as long as that's an application that is not filed late. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the board, starting with Trustee Beckman?
I don't have any questions.
Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Trustee Wakeman?
No questions.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Nick?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Dean?
No questions.
Mine were already answered in the meeting, so the time is 7 o'clock. I'm closing the public hearing.
Do you want to open this for public comment, just formally?
Oh, yes. Any questions from the public?
True, true.
Yeah. Hasn't been any yet. All right. The time is 7 o'clock. I'm closing the public hearing, and I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to adopt ordinance number 820, an ordinance of the Town of Milliken, Colorado, enacting a new article in Chapter 11 of the Milliken Municipal Code regarding special event permitting.
My second.
Town clerk? Please call for a vote.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Time we got voting. All righty. Next item on the agenda is authorization of the mayor to sign up a professional service agreement with Tate and Associates to provide administration support systems for the Alubio Well Blending Project, presenting as John Rabus, Streets and Facilities Director.
Good evening. Administration services include daily inspections, weekly meetings, smidl review, bill change requests, pay, review or pay applications, and change orders. A Tate representative will be on-site an average of 10 hours per week. Currently, there are several, seven different projects that staff is working on. Currently, there are seven, there are seven different projects that staff is working on.
Questions from the board, starting with Trustee Wakeman? No questions. Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Nix?
No questions.
Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Trustee Beckman?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
No questions.
You. There's no further discussion, I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Tate &amp; Associates to provide administration support services for the Alluvial Well Blending Project for $57,650.
My second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote. Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the authorization of the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Tate &amp; Associates to provide administration support services for the Quintin Stormwater Crossing Project. Presenting again is John Ravis, Streets and Facilities Director.
The background on this project here would be the same. So administration services include daily inspections, weekly meetings, supplemental review, fill changes, bill change requests, review of pay applications and change orders. A Tate representative will be on-site an average of 10 hours per week.
Questions from the board. Trustee Wakeman?
No questions.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Nix?
No questions.
Trustee Beckman?
No questions.
Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
No questions.
I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Tate &amp; Associates, Inc., to provide administration support services for the Quintin Stormwater Crossing Project for $61,850.
My second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote. Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can make one comment on this project. This project is the one that we will be using our ARPA funds on, excuse me, that we received, what, now, three years ago?
Okay, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Quintin Stormwater Crossing Construction Agreement with Coyote Ridge Construction. Presenting is John Ravis, Streets and Facilities Director.
In the spring of 2023, we received heavy rain events that washed out the intersection of Quintin Avenue and Op Cat Drive several, several times, and caused property damage, including flooding and included flooded basements that had to be restored. The current drainage culvert is a 40-inch pipe. This crossing will be upgraded to five individual concrete box culverts laid horizontally under the roadway that will, that will measure out to a 30-foot-wide crossing at a depth of six feet. After completion, this crossing will handle a 100-year storm event. 900 feet of the existing 10-inch AC water line will be replaced during this project.
Questions from the board. Trustee Wakeman?
No, no question. Is it included in the budget, right?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Nick?
No questions.
Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Trustee Beckman?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
No questions.
I noticed that we didn't take the lowest bid. There looked like there's reasons why. And can you expound a little bit on Coyote's work on the Cherry Street?
Yes, I sure can. We've had, we've had a great experience working with Coyote Ridge on the Cherry Street project. Their, their quality of workmanship is excellent. Their, their concrete is all done in-house by their own staff, so they can control their own timing. So they don't have to rely on a subcontractor to try to schedule the subcontractor during, during the construction project in, in order to be able to get that crew out to do any concrete work.
Okay, so that was the reason why. Okay, makes sense. Thank you. There's no further questions? I'll take a motion on the matter.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement with Coyote Ridge Construction LLC for the construction of the Quintin Stormwater Crossing Project
Second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote. Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Now we have the Alluvial Well Blending Project Construction Agreement with Dietzler Construction, John Ravis, Streets and Facilities Director.
We recently had to shut down the reverse osmosic water treatment plant due to increased discharge regulations from CDTHE that could not be met, causing the town a loss in water production of 100 to 120 acre-feet of potable water per year. By blending the Alluvial Well water with purchased water at the town's potable waters, potable water storage tank site, the town can recover approximately 100 acre feet per year based on distribution system usage and the makeup of the difference in the water deficit. And we did also receive a million-dollar grant from the Department of Local Affairs on this project.
Questions from the board. Trustee Orca?
No questions.
Trustee Beckman?
No questions. Good job getting the, the grant, though.
Trustee Nix?
No questions.
Trustee Lane?
No questions.
Trustee Wake?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No questions.
Okay. One quick question. Have you worked with Dietzler before?
Yeah, we sure have. They're the company that built our, the early clay pump station.
They sounded, okay. All right. I don't have any questions then. Thank you. All right. I will take a motion on the matter.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement with Dietzler Construction Corporation for the construction of the Alluvial Well Blending Project for $1,973,194.36.
Second.
Town Clerk, please call for a vote. Trustee Nick?
Yes.
Trustee Orca?
Yes.
Trustee Wakeman?
Yes.
Trustee Beckman?
Yes.
Trustee Lane?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Our next report is written from the Community Development Report. Does anybody have any board reports for tonight? Bearing none? Is there any other for business to be?
I have a quick comment. I just wanted to say, I know the Historical Society and, and the streets worked on getting the new banners up for honoring our veterans. I've heard quite a few people comment, and of course, my dad was one of them too. But I know I talked to the Blackmers and some others that were pretty happy about having those up. So thanks for the effort on those and the cooperation.
I have a comment. I just want to send a thank you to all of the staff for their hard work and professionalism for the past year. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Any other board reports, meetings that you've attended? Bearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bearing none. We're out.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
And thanks, I like the car.